And gentlemen, you're welcome to come up here as well. Don't run out on me, Matt LaLasha. And you know what? I apologize because there's a meeting coming at 7:00. So I had it today so we could go an hour and a half if we have to, but I guess they didn't tell us there was another meeting at 7:00.
Conservation effect?
Yeah. And the school committee's an executive session on the other side, so we can't go there. They're going where? Is going where? Well, forget what I just said. There it is. You can speak all night till 9:00. Okay. So if the clerk could call the roll? Here.
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 Thank you very much. This is a joint meeting, the Finance Subcommittee and the Parks and Recreation Subcommittee as well. We're here to discuss capital improvements at Colley Stadium. Present with us this evening for the record is the members of the Parks and Recreation Subcommittee, Councilor Blanda, Councilor Gittia, and Councilor Scott is the chairperson of the Finance Subcommittee along with Councilor Dakota and Councilor Chenest. So we have here with us as well, and I want to introduce the people that are here. We have Mark Byrne, DPW from the DPW, Matt LaLasha, Chairman of the Lowell Athletic Activities Foundation, Brian Burns Jacobson, OPM of Socotech Engineering. We have Scott Willett, Athletic Director of Lowell High School, Yvani Bias Rose, DP/ Assistant City Manager, and Austin Bell, Assistant Director of Finance of the City of Lowell. So welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. This is a very important, informative Subcommittee that we're going to be discussing. In front of us are the capital improvements at the Martin Athletic Complex. I'm very, very excited to be talking about this. Do you have anything you want to?
No, you're covering it all.
I just want to say before we begin, if Yvani, if you want to just get started with this, I start at the top with my little darling. Go ahead, Yvani.
Thank you, Councilor. So thanks, everybody, for scheduling this joint Subcommittee. As the council is aware, we have been focused on improvements at the Martin Athletic Complex for a number of years and have had some successes and have more work to do. And so we felt like this would be a good time to kind of present some of those successes and to give you some additional information about planned work within the complex. So officially, the name is the Martin Athletic Complex. I think a lot of people do often refer to the entire site as Colley Stadium, but the stadium is just one component of all of the facilities that exist at the complex itself. So it is the primary location for Lowell High Athletics outdoor sports. So that includes baseball, softball, soccer, field hockey, and track programs. We have a number of different fields and facilities that exist on the site already. And we have made, and by "we," I mean the city, has made investments in the complex over the last several years. Most recently, I included a nice aerial image of the football field. But the Billy Rizzo's Field, that was a $2 million investment in the city to replace the turf at that location. Earlier this year, we celebrated the ribbon cutting of the Carvallo Field. That's also a new turf field that is right across the street from the stadium. And in addition to that, the city also invested $250,000 in an assessment, a structural assessment of the grandstand itself to ensure that we understood the existing conditions. So that's a snapshot of some of the recent investments that we have spent at the site. And we know that there is more work to do. But actually, before I jump into that, I do, I'm sorry, I wanted to give the Athletic Director an opportunity if he wanted to tell us a little bit about the number of students that have been sort of impacted by these recent investments that the school's made and the number of student athletes that are using the site.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you. So as discussed, our athletic programs during the two outside seasons, being the fall athletic season and the spring athletic season, we use the Martin Athletic Complex as our primary home for a majority of our teams. Not all, but a majority. An example would be like our rowing team. They're, of course, not going to be at the stadium complex, but the majority of the teams would be there. So in the fall, for example, if you include our sub-varsity teams, which would be like our freshman teams or our junior varsity teams along with the varsity teams, we're looking at 12 to 13 sports. That's in the fall season. 12 to 13 teams, excuse me, spread out over the sports. And then the same would be in the spring. When you have your baseball, you have two, three levels of baseball, two, three levels of softball, for example. Lacrosse for the boys would have a varsity and a JV team. Same with the girls. So when you add all that up, you're looking at 12 to 13 teams each of the two outside seasons. Again, that's fall and spring. And that would come in, depending on the year, definitely 250. Some years, on a good year, you could get as high as 300 just on those particular teams that would be the primary users of the facility. Just a quick note on it in that, you know, in 2019, that's when the portable weight room, trailer, coaches', meeting rooms, film areas, that's when that went away. So we have been without that since that time, since 2019. I did want to note that.
Thank you. And so in addition to the investments that we have already made, there have been plans put in place for future investments. One of those that is funded already through capital funds that the city had previously designated to Colley is $200,000 for a master plan for the complex. As I had mentioned earlier, it is a large site. It includes many different athletic facilities. And right now, they feel very separate from one another. And so it's not necessarily as a pedestrian, as a visitor. It doesn't always feel very interconnected, although it should be. And so essentially, one of the things that the Planning Department is hoping to use these funds for is to do an assessment about things like, how can we connect walking paths through the different facilities? How we might reconsider some of the existing fencing that exists to open up access to the facility itself? And what that might look like? So essentially, a master plan. Those are our capital funds, as I said, that had already been secured. In addition to that, Lowell Athletics and Activities Foundation has also privately secured a $3 million federal earmark that is for specific use to the grandstand itself within the complex, the football complex. And so that was a federal earmark that Lowell Athletics applied for directly and that they were able to secure. I will give Matt an opportunity in just a second to talk a little bit more about the foundation and how we've been working in collaboration with them. But sort of next step investments are what we're going to go into more detail about. That would be what we're referring to as the training facility. As Scott had just mentioned, the stadium right now does not have a training facility, weight room, locker, kind of meeting space, any of that that exists other than what exists kind of under the grandstands, which are locker rooms that are in pretty rough shape, to put it nicely, I think. And so the Training Center is a proposed potential future phase, as is the stadium grandstand. I think anybody who's visited Colley in recent years probably can tell that the grandstand itself is in need of some additional repair. So we'll be going in more detail about both of those projects and provide some images and walk folks through potential proposals for those future phases. But I did want to make sure that we kind of acknowledge and recognize the role that the Lowell Athletics Foundation has been playing in these ongoing conversations. So I want to just give Matt an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Yvani. And I would want to start by first thanking all members of the council, not just the members that are here today and prior councils. The commitment that's been made to the youth in the City of Lowell during my time of being heavily involved has been, I would say, second to none of many of our peers that are out trying to ensure that their community have similar options for their children. It is very nice, as you may have seen me in other endeavors or other times, as someone who was on the board of the Baseball and Softball League, the fact that we're winning all the time now, and we can take a little victory lap on that, is a testament to the commitment that we're talking about here tonight, that we're reinvesting in our parks, we're reinvesting in our children, in our programs. And this is an expansion of that. It's a continuation of that investment. And so what I wanted to make sure, I just take a second to focus upon, is why this informational piece that we're putting together tonight, why it's being shown as a multi-phased step or next steps as we go forward. The Training Facility Building that Athletic Director Willett had referenced is something that replaces what were once trailers, for those of us that have been out there or have been here in the city for a long time. Those trailers were a wonderful donation back in the '90s and by the early 2000s had seen better days. And by the time we had moved on, we were in a situation where it was a must. And so this Training Facility that we're discussing and the votes in capital expenditures that have already been voted on by the council and the intent of trying to move this project forward are intended to make sure that now, that currently, as we're coming through the high school project, as we're seeing the fruits of all of the efforts that we've done to give our high school students the best learning environment they possibly can have, that we can be piggybacking that on the same timeline and be completing what will then give our student athletes that are in the spring and fall sports the same advantages that they're gaining with the fieldhouse that we've chosen to build downtown. Our winter athletes are about, or currently are in, a first-class facility that this city has chosen to give to its kids. This Training Facility and the timeline that it goes on would complete in a very similar timeline to the high school and would really give us an understanding that we've put our kids on par or in superior situation to many of our others in the community. The last thing I'll say upon that to make sure everyone understands kind of what the goal would be from the foundation's perspective. This gives us an opportunity to create what would become a youth center, like our senior center, where it's a center for all of our different programs, to be able to have community space, to be able to have locker room space and have those other things as the project moves forward. Initially, in phase, the first phase of this, as we're trying to figure out what's the best choice for the grandstands, this building will act as the locker room space, the weight room space, the community space for the high school and for those other programs that I mentioned. It could be lacrosse. It could be arts programs. It could be anything. It creates a youth environment, a youth space that we currently don't have. And if the council and private activities and donors are successful in moving forward on the second half of kind of what's being laid out here today, we now can, won't have duplication, we'll have an opportunity to make sure the programming in both serve both the high school and the youth. And the intent tonight is to make sure that that is made clear and that we're doing this in both a fiscal and intelligent way as we move forward to give the best to the kids.
Thanks, Matt. And so we have details on the Training Center and the Grandstand Project. And so I'm going to hand it over to Brian from Socotech, who's been working with us as an OPM, to walk through what the Training Facility Building looks like, what the programming is, cost implications. And then we'll defer to the council if you want after the Training Facility portion to discuss that. Or should we go right through to the Grandstand and then have the discussion after? We'll defer to whatever you choose. But I'll let Brian get started on the Training Center details.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to meet with us and hear what we have to say. As said, my name is Brian Burns Jacobson. I'm a project manager with Socotech AE. We are serving as the OPM for both the Training Facility and the Grandstand Project. We've also performed feasibility studies for the Training Facility, the bleachers that are at the complex and Carvallo Field. That work started in August of 2023. For the last 16 to 18 months, I've been intimately involved with every step of this process thus far. So I feel, even though these aren't my drawings, pretty capable of walking through them with all of you. So what you see in front of you is a rendering of the architect Patrick Tighe's design. We are currently at approximately the 95% to 98% construction document stage, meaning he's given us a final set. We took our look at it, made some comments. He's making some very minor changes to make sure that he's accommodating everything that we are looking for as a city and as a committee. The intent of his design is to pull in some of the elements of other parks and facilities in Lowell. The stone, as you can see on the front there, is based upon, I believe it's a facility at Shed Park. And other elements tie in this theme of sturdiness and longevity while also remaining elegant. So this will be the view. As you can see, there's the track directly in front of the concession stand with bathrooms on either side of the stone on the left and right. And here's an overall view from above showing you the layout and orientation of this new Training Facility. It's located on the visitors' side and it accommodates any potential track improvements in the future. So here we have the furniture plan for the Training Facility. This gives an outline of the intended use of the spaces, the relative size of them, and how they interact with each other. You'll see, all the way to the left is the Film Room/Community Room. The intent in the short term would be for it to be for the student athletes to view game film, prepare for games, meetings, presentations by coaching staff and anyone in the athletic department to the students. And it can also be, in that time, used for events, dinners, graduation events as the kids are moving on from the teams at the end of the season. Space number two, you'll see the Weight Room, where this layout is based upon the previously procured flooring and weight equipment from Gronkowski Fitness. Along with, at the top, you'll see kind of a stippled area, and that's a turf-runout area. They can push sleds if it's raining, if it's cold. They can do sprints, things like that in that area. Three and four are the locker rooms, currently designed as a men's and women's rooms, but the use of them can be altered to fit whatever sports team or program is needed at the time. You can see they were designed to have an equal number of lockers. If it's men's and women's, a big focus of what we wanted was to ensure that there was equity between all genders in this space. Directly adjacent to them, numbers 12 and 13, those are restrooms. They're attached to those locker rooms and also available to the rest of the facility depending on who's using it and when it is. Moving above, we have a Training Room. This is for the athletic trainer, tape up the kids if there's an injury, to take care of them with an ice machine and a couple beds for them to lay down on and be treated. And then we have some office spaces directly across the hall. You can see 10 and 9. Those are for the coaching staff, athletic staff, anyone else that needs to use the space during the seasons and in between. And then you'll see number 8. That's a second bathroom. That's a facility, all-gender bathroom, so that if you need to use that without having to go into locker room space, you can use your restroom. And then you'll see number 6 is a concession space. The intent of this is to do not full cooking. There's no range. There's no fry-o-later. There's no heavy-duty cooking equipment or mechanical systems in place to handle that. But it can do warming stations if you wanted a microwave, a toaster oven, a pizza warmer, things like that. That facility would handle that. And then 7 and 5, those two spaces, are the bathrooms for the patrons, those who are most likely on the visitors' side as the Grandstand has its own internal facilities. Patrick included a couple more renderings just to show the integration of the building into the space. You can see how there's space for walking around the exterior along with a covered area to keep people out of the rain and out of the elements as they're congregating and as they're getting their food. And now we have an estimated project budget for this. This is for general construction, owner, furnished items, and some contingencies, construction as well, totaling $4.8 million. As I said, there are some changes that are being made currently by Patrick and his team. And those will have a minor impact on this overall cost. One thing I also want to mention is that throughout these efforts, we've gone through a value engineering process in which we've identified several wants that aren't necessarily needs. And in an effort to bring the cost down to something that is more reasonable to the council, we've eliminated, I believe it's close to about $400,000 worth of extra construction. That includes reducing some of those overhangs to save on material and labor costs. That changes some of the materials used. And his focus has been to choose cheap but durable and aesthetically pleasing materials because we have high school kids that are going to come in there. They might be excited after a game and they might run into a wall. And we want to make sure the wall holds up, so to speak. We are continuing to identify potential value engineering opportunities as well. And in the drawing set that Patrick is putting together, we have included as alternate deducts, meaning that when we receive bid pricing from the contractors, we can then accept those alternates, depending on the numbers we receive, to reduce that overall cost. Those options are more highly desired than the ones that were already removed, which is why we didn't remove them outright. But they will be a point of discussion when those bids come in.
Thank you so much. May I just say personally, that's a beautiful job. I want that. I want it. It's so beautiful. I know it's a lot of money, but I want it, okay? But having said that, I think we'll stop right now. And if any of my colleagues have any questions thus far, Councilor Gittia?
Thank you. I think the layout might have some challenges to it when you look at the interior piece. When you look at, you have a trainer's room, and then you have a trainer's office/Coach's office, which is 9 and 10. It just looks like if the trainer's room was just increased to one area and not put the trainer on the other corner, it could be one big room. Because trainer's rooms take up a lot of space and shrinking that down is always a challenge. One of the other things, the restroom inside, you could probably put two little restrooms in the locker rooms and not need a restroom for the inside interior if there were just two bathrooms inside of each of the locker rooms, so that you're not exiting and coming in and out, in and out. And if like a coach needs a bathroom, they can go in one of those or you can move one over there. It just seems easier when someone's changing or something. They can go in and out of a bathroom within a locker room than go out to the hallway to go in and then come out. And you're going to have a lot of kids. So I think that the bathroom situation might be something you want to just review again. But all in all, I mean, it's something that's needed. The other question I have is, it looks like in all the renderings, there were no visitor bleachers. 1, 2, 3, and 4. When you look at all of them, there's no bleach. There there is because that's just because you're doing that side. But if you look at your renderings for future, the visited bleachers are gone. And why not put that over, center it somehow? Use a little bit more of that layout there and have it so it aesthetically doesn't look like it's sent to a corner of the area? Do you see what I'm saying, Matt? It just seems as though, in the future, the look looks like it's going to be, that's going to be empty space there. Why not center that over? So now you're in at least some of the sun rather than the shade. And it's probably a water and sewer issue. You've got to bring it further. But I think the expense is worth...
Are you referring to the renderings of the Grandstand that don't show?
They don't show anything when you're in 3, 4, and 5.
So those options are... The rendering system that Patrick uses is a little beyond the one that we used in our feasibility study. And that's, removing those bleachers isn't a part of the improvement plan? It's just the rendering doesn't show those.
Okay.
So the intent is to keep the bleachers there.
Well, I guess my question is, we haven't seen 5,000 people at Colley since 1964. Do we really need to have those bleachers there? And wouldn't it make sense to have more open space over there? Especially when you're looking at track and you look at all the events that are on the side. If those were gone, could you utilize the space in a better area? Because that's what most places are doing now, is they're keeping a lot of fans on one side and just showing it that way to contain them. And then football teams go away or track teams. The question's going to come down to a lot of the usage over there when you look at storage and everything else. That would be a nice offset if the bleachers weren't there, I think. But you guys know, and I'm sure Mr. Burns knows more about the attendance numbers than all of us. But I haven't seen those bleachers filled in many, many years. So why not condense down and use that land in a better way maybe for one of the other sports so that you can have more sports there than just track? And you could maybe put something over there that might be useful.
Thank you.
So I'll just respond to a couple portions of that, in particular, the interior layout. I referenced some improvements and changes that Patrick was making. And you hit one right on the head, was the Training Room. The intent is actually to switch 10 and 9 with the Training Room right now and get rid of two of the offices, make it one, and have a larger Training Space. So we agree with you on that. On the one exterior and then the two that are connected to the locker room bathrooms, the intent was to give the students more bathroom space when they're using the lockers as much as we could afford to fit into the footprint. So I think you might have been referring to the fact that on the lower, number 13, So I think you might have been referring to the fact that on the lower, number 13, they kinda have to go into that small little atrium and then go into the bathroom. That was to fit more lockers into the space. So it was kind of a back and forth that we went on and decided that we could fit a little bit more if we did that.
I think functionally, when you look at it, and I know where the water and sewer is, so if you put the locker room on, say, the east side and switch the other portion, which is number 2, to the west side, I mean, number 1 over to the west side, you'd be closer to the water and sewer for all your bathrooms and everything, because you're getting closer to Douglas Road where all the water and sewer is, so then you don't have to drag it underneath a footing or anything like that. So it just, I know you're probably gonna mark this up again later, but it just seems the water and sewer on the other side going towards Douglas would probably be an easier fit for functionality, for building purposes, when you're running all this stuff. You don't wanna go under when you could be on the outside.
When you're laying pipe and conduit down, it's really just putting down an extra 20 feet of plastic pipe, so that connection in wouldn't have too much of an impact on the actual construction piece. And there's a big focus on making sure that they're adjacent. You'll notice a thicker wall in between, that's a wet wall, that's gonna contain all of the piping and everything there.
I just, I do this for a living. I'm an engineer, so I don't wanna go under slabs to make any kind of repairs in the future. So yeah, you can add more infrastructure underneath a slab, but the last thing you wanna do is repair underneath that slab. So yes, it's easy to do during construction time, but I'm not pushing back and forth, I'm just saying that functionality-wise for future repairs and stuff, it would be so much easier if it was on the side where the infrastructure came in, that's all. But if it makes a major difference, then leave it where it is.
I'd just touch upon one other piece of that, is the initial idea, too, is aesthetically, that community room facing out to the parking lot gives some aesthetic feel, but if aesthetics is at the detriment of maintenance, that may be something we have to explore. But that was kind of the initial, why the design was put that way.
And the other thing with the concession stand piece, is that gonna be a grill and stuff, or is it just gonna be, it's just gonna be pizza and stuff?
It's just warming.
Yeah, if we were to go down the path of going with full fryolators, then you have to have certified people that are using it, and we have mostly volunteers that are doing those things at football games, and so it avoids putting us in a tough spot.
That's why everyone is leaning towards not even putting concession stands. If I had it over again, and we're building one right now, I wouldn't even put a concession stand in, I would go with the food trucks, because people love, and I get it's a takeaway from, like, some organizations' profits, but at the end of the day, people love those food trucks, and it opens up space that you could actually use for more locker rooms, so they don't even have to go in at halftime, they can go right into the fieldhouse and then come out. But again, I understand why people want concessions, but I think honestly, they're going away because everyone loves those food trucks, if you can get them.
Chairman Scott.
Thank you, Councilor Marcia. I just have a question on the timeline, I guess, that we're looking at for this, for the training center right now. And also, I don't know if we've looked at what the debt service would be, like, the timeline for that, if we could maybe hear a little bit about that as well? Thank you.
Sure, so I can speak to the debt service. So if we were to just do the training center, on average, on an annual basis, at 4% borrowing for 30 years, for the full amount, it's just under $280,000 a year, just for that fieldhouse. And again, that's 4% for 30 years.
And the timeline?
I'll let Giovanni or Brian...
As far as the timeline that we're looking at, like, I don't know if it coincides with Lowell High School debt, like, when that comes online?
I can talk to the timeline.
Okay, thank you.
So if the council goes back, the subcommittee goes back to the full council and a vote takes place, that you accept the training center that we wanna move forward on. I think that once, if we get permission to move forward on it, then the timeline would be, we would hope that we would go out to bid sometime in maybe late winter, early spring, and it's probably somewhere between 12 to 14 months, more like 14 months timetable built. So you're looking at probably maybe sometime around July of '26.
To La Dakota.
Just a quick question, maybe to Mr. Ball. Would any Essar money be available to help with this project?
Thank you, Counselor, for your question. The answer to that is unfortunately no. So the Essar obligation deadline, I believe, was September 30th. So unfortunately, all of the funding for Essar has already been committed as of this point in time. We did, however, fund Socotex OPM through Essar from the school department, though.
How much was that?
It was approximately $170,000 or so.
Timing is very odd.
Counselor, are you all set? Counselor Malanga.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, as far as the design, I'm very pleased. I'm extremely pleased. It's awful late, it is just about complete in the design phase, and I really don't wanna be going back and making changes, you know, on coring more engineering fees. If this is what the athletic directors and those involved want this as requirement, we owe it to them. So I like it as is, that's me personally. It might be a little more money if Counselor Gitchia does make some good points about tying in, we can avoid that, so I do agree with that point, but I would like to leave it alone as far as the design, rather than on coring any more costs than we already have. So with that being said, the three, Madam Chair, three, you to Giovanni. Giovanni, that $3 million federal grant earmarked, so that's for the grandstand, so that could not go towards the fieldhouse, correct?
That is correct.
All right. So what aft, not counting that, let's, you know, what do we have in the, in reserves or with the fund towards this fieldhouse? What are we looking at right now, the funds that might be in the school, that lie in the school committee, what the city may be holding? What do we have to work with right now? Madam Chair, through you to Austin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So currently, Counselor, we have, back in '20, '22 for the capital, we appropriate, the city council appropriated $200,000 for a general design of Colley. In '24, we, the city council appropriated $2 million, and then in the '25 capital plan, there was an additional $2 million appropriated as well. The answer to your question about what is remaining, in '22 capital, there's about $175,000 left, which Giovanni is going to use for her master plan for the entire complex at Colley Stadium. In the '24 capital, there's $1.4 million remaining, and in the '25 capital plan, nothing has been spent currently for Colley.
Is there any money in the school department, in the school department? Do they have any funds towards this?
Not that I know of, Counselor.
Okay. All right. Well, I think it's very important that we prioritize this training facility. This has to happen, a lot's been put into it. Design phase was very costly, we're nearly through it, we have to push on somehow, some way. We owe it to the students and the coaches and all those who have put in the hard work to get this done. So I am a definite yes in how we get there to achieve this, so that's my take on that. But, and lastly, Madam Chair, through you to the athletic director, Scotty Ulet. Now, the track, is that adequate enough? Why aren't we more, why aren't we more active at that stadium, Scott? Why, you know, are we able to host New England State Regionals or anything with that track and field? And if not, what are the, what's preventing us from doing so?
That's a good question, the track. As most know, we have a very high-profile track program, and we do host some meets at the stadium. Right now, the stadium is six lanes on the sprint side, which is on that visitor bleacher side.
Mm-hmm.
And the sport of track has evolved so much, it's grown, that in the old days, six lanes was sufficient, and that's what kinda was built, and that's what everybody did, but the sport has evolved so much. Eight lanes is really kinda the new requirement to have those bigger New England State level type meets. So there is part of our phasing wishlist-type thing is to add those last two lanes on that sprint side. And when I say sprint side, I'm talking about for like a 100-meter dash, a 200-meter dash, your hurdle races. You don't necessarily need the eight lanes all the way around, you need them for those shorter sprints on that visitor bleacher side. So we do have some ideas and some things in our wishlist here, as we phase along on this, that would allow us to do that, and that would be incredibly beneficial, and that would be a huge win for...
I would agree, Scott. What, do you have an approximate cost associated with that? Or maybe Mr. Burns?
In our initial training facility, Carvallo Field feasibility study, we also looked at the feasibility of adding those two sprint lanes on the visitor's side. It would involve some augmentation to the existing visitors' benches. The stairs that come down infringe into where those lanes need to be, and there's 42-inch setback to make sure the runners don't hit any kids as they go. So all of that work, all told, if I'm remembering correctly, is about $1.1 million. It would also be our recommendation that, in that process, the track would be resurfaced, because then you would have two new lanes and six old.
Right.
Right? So you wanna be on an even footing for everyone.
Okay, and is that included in the 1.1? Resurfaced?
Yes.
Okay. I like that. Okay, so thank you for the information, gentlemen. So we're approximately 1.1...
Counselor, if I could just, real quick, sorry, the resurfacing, we are due to have that done anyway, so that's something that's gonna be in the pipeline one way or another.
Okay, excellent.
Resurfacing, yeah.
Excellent. I'd like, I'd like to see that done as well, to ramp up activities, to make this stadium, this beautiful complex. We've come such a long way with the recent grand opening of Carvallo Field. We're making progress, and I wanna continue the momentum there. So I'd like to see if we can incorporate the widening of the track into this. We're already roughly $1.5 million in the coffers, so we would need 3.5 for the training facility approximately, another million, so, you know, I couldn't understand bonding that. Anyway, anything we have to do, whatever we have to do to get it done. But I would like, I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I'd like to include the widening of the track as part of this project as well. So thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, excuse me.
Just before we move on, I do wanna make sure, I think Brian mentioned it, but we do wanna clarify that the location of the training facility building has accounted for the track expansion, and so the, like, where it has been placed would allow us to make those changes to the sprint lanes without impacting needing to, like, move the building. We sort of assumed that in the layout already, and so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, and while I'm at it, I'll also just state for the record that Counselors should anticipate another $2 million ask in the capital budget. As we've discussed in the last few years, that's kind of been consistently what we've been coming in for, and DPD does anticipate putting in another $2 million ask in the '26 capital request.
I like it, and excellent foresight, Giovanni. Thank you very much.
Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd just like to say thank you for the presentation. I think this is well thought out, and there's a lot of good stuff in here for all of our student athletes and the community. I did have a couple small questions. The first one is, two locker rooms are great, but we talked about the amount of teams over there. Is that gonna be sufficient for the needs? Are we gonna create a resource contention issue where there's not gonna be enough space to service the programs we already have? If so, is now the time to look at doing more? I realize that adds costs, but I don't, I don't wanna see us go through the effort of building something that doesn't satisfy the needs that already exist. So that's one question. And then the other one is, it looks like there's two small closets, I assume one's a janitor closet, one's like an electronics kind of closet for network gear, AV stuff. I just wanna make sure that that stuff's included, just because with all the kids that are gonna be in and out of here, there's gonna be a lot of cleaning that has to happen. And obviously, you know, we wanna make sure the janitors have the tools they need in order to keep the building up. So those are, those are my basic questions, but I think this is a great step in the right direction here. And, you know, maybe some of those additional resources come when we look at the other side of the stadium, I don't know, but I just wanted to mention that, because it was in my head, and I'm sure others watching may have the same questions.
So I will just address the issue about whether or not we have enough kind of locker room space, and you hit the nail on the head, right, is that there are, there are not great but existing locker rooms underneath the grandstand, and so a future phase which anticipates the renovation of those grandstands would provide some additional locker room space. So we feel like that we'd have adequate coverage at that point. Short-term, it might be a little tight, but the assumption is that we wouldn't sort of be building out unnecessary duplicative facilities, with the assumption that eventually something will happen with that grandstand, which we'll be discussing more shortly, the options, but there are facilities that exist there, and if those are renovated at a future date, then we would be able to essentially have, like, home, home lockers and away lockers, or, you know, just shared locker use, depending on, like, the sport, the sports that are using the facilities at that time.
Okay, thank you.
And I can respond to the janitorial space and closet space. You'll notice between 8 and 9, two closets. Those will be for tell data, janitor's space, storage, things like that. There are also two closets in between 6 and 7. One of those is for the concession stand, to have their food and other things, and then a smaller janitorial closet. And then if you look to the right of the two locker rooms, there are two larger spaces, and those are intended to be electrical, mechanical spaces that can also be used to storage.
Okay, great.
I'd just touch one last thing, Counselor, from your question. There also has been private fundraising through the foundation that would be earmarked specifically towards the existing grants, excuse me, the existing grandstands and locker rooms, specifically the locker rooms. So there's been over six figures that have been raised specifically for that, that would be part of, as we're doing all of this process as well.
Great, thank you. I also noticed that this, this building seems to lack any shower facilities, and I assume that was a conscious choice, but I just did wanna note that and ask that question.
Can I just bring you back to the construction of Lowell High School on Art Can Drive, and they were doing the athletic center? And we went and took a tour, and it's beautiful, but the very first complaint we heard of was not enough bathroom space for the woman. So please, don't forget the woman in that respect.
Is equitable, the layout and the use?
I mean, one thing to have a locker room, but if you have to go to the bathroom, you're not going in the locker room, but we need another space for the woman, a little bit more. I don't know why that is, but it is. It's human nature, I guess. I can attest to that. So thank you. Counselor Gitchia, did you have a question?
I do. I'm just, currently, through you, Madam Chair, over to the other side. Currently, we're wondering, what do we do currently for a concession stand?
That's a good question. To be, we wing it, you know?
Good answer, Scott.
Yeah, it's, it's not good. We have a refrigerator, and, you know, we'll bring some food in, and, you know, like, we have just some volunteers, and they'll sell candy, you know, maybe they'll get some pizzas, waters, you know, the very, very basics. There's no real equipment, it's depleted in there, you know, the whole thing, from concessions to the locker rooms, the bathrooms. We're hurting, you know?
So the question is, in the renderings that are gonna be done in the second portion, the renovation piece, whether it's 1, 2, 3, or 4, in those diagrams or outlines, is the concession stand gonna be put over that side, eventually? So I see, yes.
Yes.
So just for function purposes, why wouldn't we just continue to do what we're doing right now and give you more space over there for other things? Because eventually, your concession stand's gonna be on the other side anyway. So why not just build something that is gonna be sustainable, you're gonna love, you're gonna have use for all the way through, and just fight the concession stand thing for a few more years until, I guess that's, because to me, that's a good space that you could use for something that you've always wanted over there, and then just fight selling candy or pizza and stuff like that for another few years and have this for the future? That's really, I understand that right now they're fighting that, but why not just stay that way and have a really good use over there for that space? Because eventually, it's gonna move over anyway, so why not? I guess that's my question over to you.
I would say the initial thought processes is to maintain as much flexibility for future usage over there. If that space does become something along the lines of a youth center type, you now have the ability to have a small space that can act as almost a small catering service kitchen area like that. If you were to utilize, that space is all being built out to maximize future functionality, that'd be one reason. But if after the second portion of this is all done, if everyone is committed to funding the second portion, we would be perfectly happy to remove that concession stand.
When I'm, when I'm looking at it, what I think is that if you move the offices to that area, your locker rooms get bigger. You could push your locker rooms out and do a lot more functions in there, as somebody had brought up, you know, shower space or whatever, but you could push your, and Lowell High is a big athletic group, it's not as small as this little locker rooms that we're going on. In any, I think there's valuable space there, if we had more, we put the coaches' offices out to the front, got rid of the... If we had more, we put the coaches' offices out to the front, got rid of the concession stand, put nice areas there, and then just looked at including more of the locker room area. It's just something, when I look at it, a concession stand right now, to me, isn't even on my thought process. I truly don't care about people making pennies on pizza and stuff like that. If you're hungry, go over to the pizza place on the corner. It's more of a function for kids and athletic abilities, and trying to get people space where it's workable. And I know I may be hurting somebody's feelings that's viewing this, but to me, you're making pennies on the dollar on pizza and candy and stuff like that versus what the use could be for a locker room area that could be bigger. And I just would look at it again, I know as Counselor Belangia outlined, you know, we don't want to spend any more money on, you know, design, but it isn't, it's pennies at this point to try to just look and say, okay, if you push the locker rooms over more, and you could move those offices to the front. And I'm not really that concerned about concession stands, that's all. I wish I could have done this at the one that we're building. We didn't think about it till afterwards, and we were like, why didn't, because we can keep people much happier in that little area.
Chairman Scott.
Thank you. I guess the only concern I would have with that comment is just that the least expensive option for the fieldhouse, the bare bones, is almost $10 million, and a reasonable option starts at $22 million. So I'm not sure, those are going to take time, and this is, I'm worried that this is taking funds away from that. That's one of my concerns. I don't want to, you know, replicate space, I understand what Counselor Gitchia is saying, but there's also, you know, you kind of have to design it for this being there for quite some time, I think. I did work puppaw on a cheerleading underneath the bleachers, and we set up a folding table, and we made sandwiches, and we probably weren't supposed to back then, but we did. We sold whatever. It wasn't a fun situation. And we did raise money for competition fees for uniforms. I mean, we did make pretty good funds that went back to the team. So, I do think it's an important thing, probably, to include it if you're going to move forward. But again, I do worry about whether or not we're replicating space and taking away from the grand plan of funding the entire proper complex. So I guess that's a discussion for all of us to decide, so, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dakota.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jumping on with Counselor Gitchia said, is that I was worried about the locker room space. And if I missed the answer, I apologize, but Counselor Janess brought up a point. Do we, are there showers or not going to be showers? There isn't.
We made a conscious effort to not put them in. You know, kind of what I think Counselor Scott is saying. We're really trying to thread the needle here in knowing that we have this big project coming, potentially, but we need a short-term, immediate relief, because we're hurting so bad. So we were really trying to balance that.
But if we did it that way, Scott, let's say we did cut down on the concessions to make those locker rooms bigger, to give us some shower space, would that be something that, if you had your druthers, you would?
It would be, I guess, on my list, but it wouldn't be the top of the list. I would go for maybe a couple more bathrooms before I went to the showers, a couple more lockers, that type of stuff, I think.
I really think you're going to need more locker room space. I really do.
Well, I don't disagree with you. Like I said, we're real, this is really trying to thread that needle to Counselor Scott's point on balancing this big, long-term project that's going to be a lot of money versus our immediate needs, and how can we sort of thread that needle?
I mean, you brought up yourself, just how much track and field has grown in the last five years. I mean, I'm not sure you have enough space right there, but what you're looking for.
I mean, the facts are, you're not wrong, and we don't have enough space as it is, what we're currently working with. So, you know, this is, this is a modest attempt to kind of keep us afloat while we get to the big piece, I think.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you.
Counselor Gitchia.
Just one more point. Scott, how many kids are on your football team?
Grades nine through 12? Between 80 and 100.
How many kids are on your track team?
Right now, well, we just started indoor track, so I'd say around 100 boys and 100 girls.
Okay, so, at one time, does football practice out there, across country, or track? Do they all practice at once, soccer, everyone practice out there at one time?
Between the fall and the spring, they're about balanced when you add up all the teams, you know? The fall has football, that's the big one. The spring has spring track, so when you combine the girls and the boys, those are the two highest-volume teams, you know? So, like I said earlier off the top, each of those two seasons, using the stadium as home base, we probably have between 250 and 300 athletes.
Okay, so, how many pizzas and concession do you sell at practice?
If I could just elaborate one-
None.
On that, yeah.
None.
That is the answer. Correct.
And that's the point, is nine out of 10 hours you're there, there's no concession even being sold. And the concession money, does that go back to the city or the school? It goes to friends or something like that?
Typically, it goes to the friends of Lowell High.
Right, okay.
The groups, yeah.
So that's what we're saying here, is, look, you know what? If we can push out, push out, and we can still do the function we're doing, and we can give more kids an opportunity to get in locker rooms, as Counselor Dakota said, I think it just makes a lot more sense. When I see it every day during practice, someone's trying to use an area and it's completely filled. If we can give more space for practices, I'll certainly dress up like the guy who used to sell the hot dogs at the spinners and throw hot dogs at you.
I heard that.
I'm just trying to say that when we're over there, you know, the practice is, you do that more than we actually play a physical game and invite people out there, that's all. And I do not disagree with Counselor Scott, but if it's going to be a long-term thing as we're looking at, I think we need that type of environment, or that's all. I'm just trying to give you a path out. I support it, I'm just trying to say there might be some revisions here that we can make that would make it more functional for everybody.
And I would think that's a perfect segue as you move forward to the next. The only comment I would make is, I think you're doing a great job articulating why this space will not be duplicative when we move forward. You can't have enough locker room space. And as we move forward to the next part of the project that I know Giovanni is eager to get to, you would then see this be freshman locker rooms, or JV locker rooms, or something like that. So it doesn't act as duplicative. And it also allows you to rent out the space, potentially through the Parks Department, to utilize this for, when we had the Nor'easters out there. Now, if you move forward with the fieldhouse, you have a space that outside parties are utilizing that doesn't then affect the varsity locker room when you move to the other phase of this. So that's how, another way we'd be avoiding any duplication.
Mark.
I'll just be real quick, because I know Giovanni wants to get into the presentation. But the direction that we kind of took when we initially started this process here was basically, we tried to scale it down as best we could to try to make sure that we fit everything possible. I mean, if we were told out of the gate we could have a 7,000-square-foot building and give them more locker space, knowing that we could keep the price down, we would have done that. I think right now, we were trying to do the best thing we could possibly do. As we are, we're in the 5,000 and 6,000-square-foot range. There's a lot of great ideas that were brought to our attention tonight, and I think that we'll take them completely under advisement and direction from where we're getting from the council. I mean, if space is our need, and we know it is, then maybe we can do a makeshift, maybe the Greater Lowell Technical High School could build us a shed for the concession stand out at the stadium. And then, we can expand six and into a locker room space, or to whatever the needs the council wants, so.
That's a plan.
Our direction here, of our committee here, was, we had some marching orders, and we tried to stay within those. And we had a dollar amount that we tried to work with, and we didn't want to kind of, as Giovanni was delivering us $2 million, we were spending it. Or we got the earmarks from the state, we started spending it. And so, we just want to keep the momentum going, but I appreciate everybody's time tonight, too.
Thank you. Giovanni, it's back to you.
Yeah, so I'm, I wanted to, can we get to your executive summary? So, as I mentioned at the beginning, you know, the training facility is one phase of construction. We know that there's a lot more work to do, not just on the facilities, the walk, you know, the walking connections, the parking lot, which we know also needs work, and will be moving forward once the sewer separation work in Belvedere is complete. But the grandstand is obviously a central piece to what is the Martin Athletic Complex. And the fact that that grandstand, I think, upon visual inspection, quite obviously needs some attention. We have, as I said, done assessments on the structural sort of condition of the building. She's seen better days, but, you know, is not going to crumble on anybody's head. But that doesn't mean there isn't work to do, and we know that there's a lot of work to do. And so, the city, in an effort to understand sort of the options that were available to us and what we should consider, procured the services of Socrotec to help us sort of think through options. And so, what Brian's going to kind of walk us through, options one through five, essentially go from, in the most perfect world, where we get everything that we want, down to fixing the concrete, as simple as that, sort of, and as narrow as that scope is. So, we have options to present, it's something to consider. These are, as I previously mentioned, the Lowell Athletics Foundation folks did secure a $3 million earmark that is specifically for the grandstand at this point. Those are the funds that we have in place for the grandstand. Everything else will be a work in progress. So I'll let Brian kind of go through the options to talk through what assumptions were made, what the planned use of the space is, and then, we also have cost estimates for all those options.
Thank you, Giovanni. So, as was intro'd, we did an assessment of five different options that were presented by the committee that they requested further flushing out. Briefly headlining them, option one is to tear down the existing concrete structure, rebuild in its same footprint with new seating and an expanded interior facility. Option two was to maintain the existing concrete facade of Colley Stadium, and then build up the stands and facilities in that same footprint. Option three is to do some improvements to the interior, as well as repairs to the exterior seating area. Option four, sorry, to continue on three, and then add an addition to the side of it. Option four is to do those repairs to the existing structure and interior, and then add a larger structure at the east end zone. Then option five is just to do the seating area, the stairs, and interior improvements to get it back up to a functional status. So, during our existing conditions survey, we went out onto site and we identified some of the issues there. We noticed, as Giovanni said, there's no inherent structural issue that's going to lead the building to fall down on anyone's heads. We did identify some life safety issues while we were there. Some spalling concrete from the stands overhead was coming loose as the rebar rusted and expanded, had a chance of falling down. We actually saw some that had fallen recently. So we identified those immediately, and they were repaired already. But that's an issue that may continue as the water continues to impact the structure, so it's something to be aware of. As I think everyone knows, it's not exactly in the best shape. We identified a significant amount of delaminating concrete, cracking concrete, spalling, rusting rebar that's going to lead to further delaminations and spalls in the concrete. There was organic growth and deteriorated caulk joints, those deteriorated caulk joints, based on the design and structure, just allows water to flow directly into the mechanical areas, electrical areas, and the facilities that are underneath those. We also noticed some deteriorating landscaping on the outside, and the locker room space, concession space, training space, all has water staining, signs of water infiltration and damage caused by that. On the exterior of the building facing towards Carvallo Field, there's spalling, there's cracking, and a significant amount of atmospheric staining. That takes away from the aesthetics, but aren't necessarily a structural issue that are going to fall down. Again, there was organic growth that we found there as well. So getting into the options, and I want to preface these options with, these are not as far along as the training center, right? The training center has gone through schematic design, design development, and construction documents, which is an iterative process to improve and finalize designs. This is conceptual layouts based on the wants and needs of the athletic department. And we understand that there is work to be done in these spaces. It's not a final design by any means. So, with that in mind, let's dive in a little bit further. Options one and two, we combined into one, because it's essentially the same layout that we'll have. It's just whether or not we're bracing up that existing wall or taking it all down. We included a significant amount of locker room space with the intent of it being used by the student athletes, men's and women's programs, from pre-varsity all the way through varsity. We did our best to maximize that space. There's connected training rooms and bathrooms with showers. We tried to, again, have equity in the counts of lockers and bathroom spaces and showers for the men's and women's. There is a concession stand and mechanical spaces as well on the ground floor. On the second floor, we have the weight room, which is an expanded weight room compared to the training facility, bathrooms and conference room slash film room for the students. That's larger and will fit more of the student athletes, as well as bathrooms and locker space for athletic staff and any officials that are going to be coming to the stadium. On the third floor, we have a larger gathering space slash study space for the student athletes to use, as well as a more expansive kitchen for preparing foods if there were any events in that space. On the fourth floor, we have kind of what we've been referring to, it's a bit of a free space to be used by the Athletic Foundation or for the Athletic Department, as well as a balcony, an exterior space that's connected directly to it for interscholastic events. And finally, the press boxes, coaches' spaces for during games, the scoreboard operators and things like that at the highest level. Smallest footprint, there's bathroom space and some office space for everyone there. Option number three is the improved, improvements made to the existing grandstand to get it back to a functional space, make it so that you can sit in all the seats again, improve the locker rooms so that they're not dented and water stained, improve the deteriorated caulking so that we're not getting water into our mechanical and electrical systems, and then to build the new, I'm going to call it a facility to the east here. It has a smaller weight room on the first floor, along with bathrooms, study space and film room on the second floor, and on the third floor, a study space for the students. You'll notice there's no locker rooms here, that's because we're doing improvements to the existing locker rooms in the existing structure. Option four is, again, similar, we're doing the improvements to the grandstand, and we're building a larger space rather than having it be adjacent. We're putting it on the east end zone. You can see new locker room space, as well as weight room space on the first floor. On the second floor, film room and study space, meeting space. And then on the third floor, again, a flex space that can be used for interscholastic events or events being held by the city or the Lowell Athletics Foundation. And five, it's a little bit of an expansion on some of the issues we found. You'll see a lot of red on the plans that we have there. Those are all your delaminations, your spalling, your cracking on the bottom floor plan. And then on the interior, the water infiltrations- And then on the interior, the water infiltrations and caulk joint failures that are leading to damage on your interior spaces. It's important to note that on options three through five, there's no changing of layouts. It's maintained the same square footages as existing. You know, maybe we can fit more lockers by choosing smaller lockers, some of those options, but we're not changing the spaces, square footage or structurally. Cost estimates, as I'm sure you've all seen, range from approximately nine and a half million dollars to do the improvements to the existing structure, all the way up to about 41, 42 million dollars for the bracing of the existing wall and rebuilding of the grandstand in the new facility. That includes contingencies, design contingencies that are to safeguard during design as we add things. The contingency drops, the closer we get to a final product, the smaller your contingency is for the design. And we typically like to recommend that contingency is transferred into your construction contingency. So it's not really money that comes back, it's just transferred to your construction that if everything goes smoothly, you get back and if it doesn't, then no. And that's more or less a quick run through of, of all of them. I know it's a lot of information that I gleaned over in, in the interest of time.
Counselor Dakota.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick points. Looking at options one and two, what is the contingency plan for people, once it's demolished, where are people gonna watch the games from?
Visitors.
So the home and the visitors will fit all in those grandstands?
I mean, the, the intention is that yes, that, you know, if it, as we're ripping apart the grandstand, the, that we would expect folks to sort of be nice and share the visitor's side for a while until, until we finish construction.
And that would be two years, three years?
It depends on the, which option. The construction timelines vary.
Let's say we went without the facade. What would we be looking at for a timeframe?
If you were to tear down the whole structure and rebuild in that same footprint, you'd be looking at two plus years.
Two plus years.
Yep. And depending on when the project started, that would impact either two or three football seasons.
Existing capacity on that side, counselor is 1,500 seats. So currently it would, would give us a decent.
On our, on the home side, right now, Matt, we're looking at like 4,000 plus?
Yeah, it's a little.
So now we'd be looking at just over 2,100 with either one of those scenarios, correct?
And then the 1,500 on the visitor's side.
Everybody feels good with that 2,000 on that side? Yep? Scott?
Yeah, I would be comfortable with that. We vetted that out, talked about it, you know what I mean? We went back through our records of ticket sales and stuff. I think Counselor Gitchia referenced it earlier. You know, the crowds are not there like the heyday, you know? So, you know, some sort of big game potentially, you know, you might have a situation, maybe. But I haven't seen it yet in my time where we would be jammed up on it, you know? I would also say, when I look around, when I go to our road games, you know, it's, it's not uncommon, you know, Thanksgiving Day, we're in Haverhill, there's only bleachers on one side, you know, as an example. The new Bill Rickerfield has bleachers on one side. We go to Tewksbury to play, the bleachers are on one side. So we, we would not be on an island by ourselves if we had to do that.
Thank you very much.
I would just also add just to that, that it's already kind of been explored, that this does not restrict us with the MIAA in any way to, to host large events as well. So we still would be within range.
Chairman Scott.
Thank you. I just have a few questions. Option three, so the showers in the locker rooms are not within the building, they're the existing showers in locker room, is that correct?
Correct.
And is that enough space that we currently have if they're just remodeling? I mean, and is that part of this cost redoing that whole space, is that?
I would let Scott answer the locker rooms. The cost to repair the existing is incorporated into the 22 million.
Space wise?
Space wise, I, well, it's a little hard to answer it fully, truthfully, because I think this isn't fully vetted out and, and we don't have the exact counts and things, you know? What I will say is what we currently have, you know, when the, in the late 90s, the last time this stadium was renovated, at that time, it was still, there's two locker rooms. It was varsity football and it was freshman football. And then at some point, someone said, well, wait a minute, the girls have nothing. So the girls took over what was once the freshman locker room. So the girls have a much smaller locker room than what the boys currently have. And, you know, what we have under there, even if it was fully functional and all working, it wouldn't be enough. But the fact that it's not all working and it's in tough shape, it really, we're in a jam in there, either way you look at it.
But the plans that we're looking at have a lot of office space, conference space, a cafeteria, a kitchen. So I'm not really sure where that consideration for the locker space that's needed, you know, where the decision was made to go with this specific floor plan.
I don't think there's an exact count on lockers in the plans. Like we have not gone through these plans like line by line like we've gone through on the training facility. So I understand where you're coming from and believe me, no one wants more locker space than I do, anyone going through these plans, you know? So I mean, that's the top, top of my list, absolutely.
I would say during this process, being cost effective was high on our list of things to make sure we stay on top of. And so I think option three amongst all of the options, adding the new facility building is the lowest cost option. And I think you're identifying some areas that may need to be addressed if we were looking forward in that, that option in particular.
Well, I just didn't know whether or not there's, there's a balance between, I, I've expressed concern about funding the training center and then us having to go back, the grandstands are in horrific shape, right? So we're gonna be looking for money. It's not going to be a long-term thing, I don't think it can be, right, with the condition? So I didn't know if there was some balance, I guess, between moving forward with a more reasonable scaled building, like is this, you know, this has been vetted out, this is the space that they need, the cafeteria, the kitchen, like I, I guess that's what, what I'm asking.
So part of our exercise was to review what these options would mean for the city, right? And how these spaces could be utilized and to assess them and see the feasibility of their usage by the students. I think that, I'm not stepping out of line here by saying that we have ones that we think function better than others out of what was assessed and that was part of the reason of us doing this, this work. And in our opinions, option three is one of the less effective at satisfying the goals of the city. It's appealing because it's cheaper than some of the other options, obviously. But we, we can absolutely work on what goes into these spaces and change those around. As I said in the beginning, this is not by any means a final use of these space, of these spaces. But again, in our opinions, option three wasn't one of the favored ways to move forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Gitchia.
Thank you. I think all the plans look amazing. The problem is like I have a beer pocket and we're looking at wine. And, you know, when you look at this thing, it's, option one is 2.5 million dollars for 30 years at 4%. Option two is 2.7 million for 30 years at 4%. Option three, the least effective one, is 1.5 million dollars for 30 years at 4%. Option four is 2.3 million dollars for 30 years at 4%. And then option five, which is the one that is the least effective one, is 830,000 at 30 years. That's including the training center, you know, piece. I, I do, I don't disagree with the whole outline. I'm just wondering if there's other funding sources that we're looking at to drop these numbers down. And that's a question through you, Madam Chair, it's over to anybody who would like to answer that. Hopefully we can pull funding sources in and it makes our decisions a lot easier because as everybody in the room knows, we have some challenges with our middle schools and, and a lot of our schools in the city. The high school debt hasn't even hit the city yet. We are releasing one. Greater Lowell Tech's debt is going away, but it's a penny in the ocean compared to some of these numbers. And when you look at them, I'm just worried about what are we actually selling as a, as a city council? And what is the outcome? And I think what Matt Lasher and his group has done for the city is unbelievable. You're getting kids out of the house, you're starting to do that. Scotty does the same thing with the track and field, who's been successful for 30 years. The question just comes down to how do we get to the endpoint? I, I don't have a problem with trying to do this, but I think there has to be major funding sources somewhere else before I can support the whole thing. I think Mr. Lasher and I have had this conversation over and over again and we're extremely hopeful that we get other people who have lived in the city who have been extremely successful to come and actually help us out. And I, I think that this is an aggressive plan. I, I don't disagree with it in any way, any of them. I mean, I, I understand the less effective, I would 100% agree. When you have that, those numbers that you guys are putting out there, and Scotty did say about having bleachers on one side, Greater Lowell just did their whole football field over, did the whole eight lane thing, did everything, and we decided to do the same thing, reduce down size, put bleachers on one side. And Scotty, I'm hoping I'm wrong, but when you build something nice, many, many people show up. We went from 200 people to over 1,000 a game for this year's football team, which was insanity. But, you know, I'm hoping that happens for them. But I don't know how we're going from here to there with all the constraints that we have in the city, with all the other things and, and all the complaints we've had. So I'd be interested to have Mr. Lasher or somebody just say, look, we are looking for the funding sources and, and so for us to pick an option before we have those funding sources is extremely hard for us. We're definitely committed, we committed the 2 million already and we're committing 2 million here. And I think we should be committed to this training center because I do believe it's a necessity more than anything else to try to get kids over and try to give, whether it's a freshman area or a senior area, whatever area they decide to, I think it's needed. But when I look at like Pawtucket Memorial and, and some of the places that keep calling us every day and we know, we've been walked through them when you, I, I think we have a challenge here. With that, I'll.
And Lowell High School won the Thanksgiving Day football game against Haverhill. Yay! Woo-hoo! Counselor Belanger.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. One, one point before I get into my question. Madam Chair, through you to Brian now. Brian, I'd like at least take a look at the, if we, by removing the, what's the exact dimensions of the concession stand? You know, it seems to be a small bump out to me. In other words, what could be gained by eliminating or minimizing it? I don't want it to see completely eliminated. I don't, I don't like the idea of visitors, parents coming in to Lowell and seeing concessions with makeshift tables and, and signs. I just don't think that's a good look. I know it's been done, I know it can work, but you know, I, I'd be object, I mean, Counselor Gitchia's been through this and I'm, I'm going to listen to him. But, you know, see, take another look, please, as to what could be gained in locker room space, it's very, it's very important, you know, if we minimize the concession stand space. And so please take a look at that and get back to us. But as far as all these renditions, they're gorgeous. They really are. And I know my colleagues are just as pleased, but they also come with an extremely hefty price tag. So, but there are more immediate needs that I want to fast track, such as the training facility, you know, it's, again, nearly complete on the design phase. We need to make that happen next year and find that funding. But the overall scope of things, I think we do a, a methodical approach here, work within our means as we move forward with the, you know, Carvallo Field, again, if we can get the training facility done in 2025, just try and continue the momentum while doing the minimum maintenance on the existing grandstand. Okay? While keeping that and trying to upgrade the locker rooms as, as best we can, as fast we can. But a complete knockdown and rebuild to the tune of a 40, 35, 40 million dollar bond, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna struggle with that, I'm not going to lie. With the needs we have with the existing schools, we need a police station. So that's gonna be a difficult one for me. But there's no reason why we can't continue the momentum month by month, year by year, on the pace we're going. And assess with that training facility, which I'm confident we can get the yes on, while taking that 3 million we have earmarked, put that in, towards the grandstand improvements, anything that's dire structurally, let's address it from the, from the worst needs, let's start tackling that, little bit chip away year after year into the grandstand. But a complete knockdown and rebuild, that's gonna be difficult, as much as I'd love to see it, I really, really would. So that's my take. I'm only, you know, when it comes to time, I'm only one of 11 votes, but, but let's work on what we can control and that's that training facility, which has to happen next year, which I am absolutely committed to as an immediate need. Thank you very much, Madam.
Thank you, Counselor Scott. Chairman Scott.
Thank you, Counselor Mercia. Just a question for Yvonne. As far as the grandstand and the structure goes, what shape are we in? I guess, what is the timeframe that we're going to be able to wait to, to fund those improvements, I guess?
Interesting question. You know, the, the nine and a half million dollar version of this is essentially to fix the issues that we have today and repair the damage that was done because of the water infiltration that we've seen. So, you know, we can and have for the last several years, I've been sort of patching here and there. And so I think it's really a matter of like what our tolerance is for it. You know, we can continue to sort of prop it up as needed while we aggress, you know, that's a sort of one decision to make as we continue to move forward in, in trying to, to raise funds, but it's sort of, it's not gonna fall down today, but also, you know, at some point we do need to address it and that at some point, to Counselor Gitchia's point, when you build really nice things, people notice, they pay attention, you know, the grandstand's gonna look that much worse when there's a beautiful training facility directly across the field. And so it is something that we'll have to weigh our options on. Seating wise, facility wise, if there is a training facility and we do have visitors' bleachers, it's not as if we are needing to like close the stadium down. It can still be used and function. But you know, at, at some point, we either need to make the investments to improve the grandstand itself or be okay with sort of taping it off until further notice.
So I guess my question would be, so doing that base repair would still be, I mean, as part of the other projects as well, correct? I mean, is that, would you not be doing the base repair? I guess if you were moving forward, like I guess option one and two, you'd be tearing everything down, right? So we wouldn't be replacing, right? I mean, so if we kind of commit, I guess I'm saying, if we have to commit to the base repair in the future and the, sorry, the trainers unit that we're talking about doing, I mean, that could be one option at this point in time.
Correct.
And we could explore the addition at a later date.
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, I think we could move forward with the training facility, make a decision to work towards investments towards that like nine and a half million dollars, fix what we have at the grandstand, repair the concrete, fix the existing locker rooms. As Scott said, they're not sort of ideal, but that plus the new training facility would certainly provide facilities that we don't currently have. And then at some point, you know, could consider what a next phase would be. I think the options as presented by Socotek sort of help us think about baseline versus, you know, ideal scenario. And ideal scenario, obviously, they all cost money, but you know, we're looking at options one and two, for example, getting to that point financially is going to take us a while. I do actually, I think there was one more slide at the very end that does address this question of like what are we gonna do about financing? And so this council knows you have already invested capital funds, you know, but, but we don't have infinite dollars. And even 2 million dollars annually is a lot to ask for. And so it is our anticipation that, you know, I'm gonna keep coming back for 2 million dollars over the next several years as we sort of tick away the, the needs at the complex. But 2 million dollars at a time when you're looking at, you know, a 30 million dollar project doesn't get you super far. But that's where other funding sources, things like state and federal earmarks, both have been previously invested at the site. We have been able to access those funds previously and anticipate and hope that we would be able to. and hope that we would be able to access additional funds. And then, you know, the city has the ability to access capital funds. We have the ability to access grants ourselves and the ability to access earmarks. But having, working hand in hand with the folks at the Lowell Athletics Foundation does also open up a different avenue of fundraising that isn't typically accessible to us as a municipality. So that relationship with the foundation does open doors that typically we wouldn't be considering in a project like this. And I do want to just give Matt an opportunity to talk a little bit about how the foundation's been thinking about potential fundraising and their future plans.
Matt?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Madam Chairman and Giovanni. I think this is the, the perfect time to express that, as all of us know, those of us that are as committed to this city as we are, that when we achieve big things, we do it in public-private partnerships. If we lean heavily to heavily on the public side, that's putting stress on other areas inside this community that need, our schools, our, our police, our fire. And so the entire impetus, the reason for the creation of the Lowell Athletics and Activities Foundation was to be an outside funding source to make this a reality. And so from day one, the intent has been to reach out to family foundations, to private donors, to our distinguished alumni, to other very distinguished individuals and people who care about this city. If you look at what's being done at the Boys and Girls Club currently and the commitment that's been made there by some of Lowell's most dedicated citizens and those who've been fortunate enough and studious enough and done well entrepreneurially, we've been able to get a lot done. This, I think, is a similar type of function. To think that, to do what these beautiful designs look like, to do them and put all of that on the backs of the city or the state would be a big ask. And I think everyone involved in this project understands that we need to make sure there are other funding sources coming to the table. And I think that's why the training facility building and the way it's initially been designed, with a lot of good suggestions tonight that can only improve upon that, give the space to go into a large campaign to try to supplement things that the city or state or federal government wouldn't be able to, to bring to the table.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, I just wanted to expand on the answer to your question. When, looking at the nine and a half million dollar option to do these repairs, right, whenever you come in and you do an extensive repair, you, in a lot of cases, you're putting something on top of what may not be the most foundationally stable thing. To expand on that, rebar as it gets wet and rust is what causes the concrete to spall and pop and come off. And we can put in a significant amount of money and really help that and push it back 15 years or 10 years, however long that is. But every time you go through another iteration of that, the cost to do it just tends to rise, just as things get more expensive, as we've seen. And those repairs last a shorter period of time. If it lasted 10 years, 10 years from now, it may only last eight years. Eight years from now, it only lasts seven. So that's something to keep in mind as you deliberate on, on the option. The other thing I just want to bring up as well, and I alluded to this in the beginning, this is a very early pass on the facilities in the space. And I think everyone up here agrees that, and I'm sure you've all noticed as well, there's certainly opportunities to do value engineering exercises, to bring in some of those spaces and affect what that final construction cost will be and bring that down. So when you see a $41 million, $42 million price tag, that's not the number that's gonna be the final number necessarily. There will be iterations of design to bring, hopefully, bring that down.
I, I would add though, if there are any, if there are any wealthy donors that are interested in a $41 million project, we have one for you.
By the time we get to the project, it'll probably double. I don't know. But anyway, I hope not. Counselor Getchea and then Counselor Dakota.
Just one more thing, not, not to bring back the concession stand thing, but tomorrow morning, I, I truly believe this fire Scotty down there. The City of Lowell or the school department, or even the Friends of Ohio can go to Reed's Ferry and buy you a very nice little building for probably under 15 grand. They can put it at the thing and it would be more than sufficient for concession stand usage until one of these options are done. I promise you that area would be better used in another way right now, that, that square footage, that's all. And, and I do think that it should have been done already. If, if the concession stand area is this bad, a Reed's Ferry isn't that much money to get something that you could actually work out of and not have any issues with. You can add heat to them and you can add electricity to them, no problem. So if they need the Volk kids to come out and do that, I'm sure that could be something that could be done pretty readily, easy. And they could go back to the school pretty quick.
I was just gonna ask if there'd be any opportunity for the wonderful students at the Greater Lowell Vocational Technical School to take up such a wonderful idea.
Well, we're, we're trying to get some internships with the city for some of them. So that, we're working on that now and trying to get them into the city workforce to try to get, so we can do some of the painting around and some of the electrical and plumbing for the city. So we've been in that talk with the manager, trying to get those things put in place.
Counselor Dakota?
Matt, if you think he's gonna give us people before he gets his stuff done, you're out of your mind. Obviously, we've, we've digested quite a bit here in an hour and a half. And, you know, I think, Matt, you brought it up pretty well, that, you know, there has to be continuous conversation about other outside fundraising, you know, for private and, and public entities. And that's, I think those talks need to continue. Obviously, you know, Colley Stadium has done its job, you know? She's, she's an old lady and she needs to be put to rest soon. But first and foremost, I think, I think the, the training center is something that needs to be done, needs to be done now. We know what the prices are gonna be and what Mark said, if we can get an RFP out, I mean, by late winter, early spring, Mark?
The design is, it's almost.
All right.
Sorry. Counselor, the design is, is pretty much, we, we just need to vet it. We might make a few changes based on the recommendations that you brought to us tonight that we would bring back to, you know, Pat. And yeah, we think that we can get it put on the street by, you know, March or April, I think.
And speaking with Mr. Ball, you know, looking at the, at the numbers, it's something that is definitely doable now. And I think that's important to get that done. At, at this point, and I totally agree with Counselor Getchea on this, that we have to kind of think outside the box, be it a, you know, a log cabin for that. But I, I'm really dead set on more locker room space. So I think that's something, if we can amend that, I would make a motion that we'd start this right away with those, with those conditions and more locker room space. Take those rooms, put them where, move, move them over a little bit, move the concession out of, out of the plan. And I think if we can do something like that and scale it down that way, I, I would make a motion that we go forward with the training center.
I think so.
So I would make that.
Yes, that's a motion. Did you get that, Michael? Say it again.
Mike, it'd be to move forward with the building of a new training center at Colley Stadium with the amended, with the amendment, amended changes brought forward by the subcommittee.
I, I'd also like to see in the motion, Madam Chair, if, but if it's okay with the making the motion with this, with some kind of Reed's Ferry concession stand. Again, I don't, I, I, that's what I meant by, well, okay, I like it included in, in the motion, if we could.
Can I just?
Can we just, how about we amend it just that they look at the space for their, their needs or?
I, I think we just approve it. And then they've heard our concerns. I think that they understand the outline. I think the Reed's Ferry thing, we can certainly ask the manager offline. I don't think it's really a major deal or DPD can go to them and, and see something like that. I, I don't think that's a major play in anything. I think we should accept it the way, and let them come back to us with the changes they think. I don't want to burden them with anything.
Chairman Scott?
I would just agree with that.
Go ahead.
I mean, I, I.
I think, I think that's, that's a motion should go move forward with the, the concept of, of building a training center. And then it develops after the council.
Right, right. We're looking at the funding. We're, we're kind of looking at going forward with.
The concept of what was delivered to us.
We can all give our input. Like I said, I, I favor the concession thing, like Counsel Belanger said, but not after hearing that they need locker space. Then, you know, I didn't mind selling stuff underneath the bleachers, you know? I mean, that's what we were there doing, volunteering. So it was a luxury. I mean, it, it was, but not in the, not in lieu of space that the coach needs for the team.
So John, since you originated to start this motion, do you wanna go with what Michael said?
Exactly what, what Mr. Gary just said.
What Michael said, seconded by Eric, Counselor Getchea. I'm gonna ask for a roll call on this.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Belanger?
Yes.
Counselor Getchea?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Dakota?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Thank you. Anything further?
So I just, thank you, everybody, for listening to us walk through all of these scenarios. You know, I know that we have much more work to do at the site. We, this group has been meeting every other week regularly for the last several months. We will continue to do so to finalize the training facility plans and to continue conversations about next phases. I do just want to make sure I am clarified that when we make the changes based on some of the feedback that we got today, that we do have a green light to move forward to an RFP and then we can present ultimately that final design.
We, we're not the whole council. There's 11 of us. This is the recommendation of the subcommittee. But we will bring the report of progress forward and we will give the, the minutes of this meeting. And then we will present the motion that was there and redo the motion and have, see what they say. Because we can't speak for counselors that are not here.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Motion adjourned.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn, seconded by Counselor Getchea. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, you're not, you're not supporting it?